The Audit Committee and therefore the Chair of Audit, Trustee Turkstra, is this something you would be happy to introduce?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to, first of all, move the report. Happy to move the report. And just wanted to assure everyone that we met with KPMG, Partner Janet Allen, and newly anointed FCA, which is a fellow Chartered Accountant, which is only, there are only 3%, the top 3% are FCA's. So we send our congratulations to her on that incredible accomplishment. And she came to see us and we talked at length about the financial statements. And I'm going to just mention that the Superintendent of Business just has probably four areas that she would like to talk to the trustees about for their information. And of course, you're welcome to ask any other questions about the financial statements. But they were approved at the Audit Committee level for this year. So it's my pleasure to move the report.
Thank you for that. Before we go to the information items from the Superintendent, could I have a second here for that report? Trustee White, thank you very much. Yes, Superintendent Zucker.
Thank you, and through the Chair. There are a couple of things that I'd like to mention about the financial statements. First, on page two, you'll notice the auditor's report. And I just wanted to mention that it is an unqualified opinion. So that means that they did not find any issues and that this is a regular audit report that you would see on any kind of audit. Secondly, on the income statement, the property taxes are now included in the provincial grant revenue rather than as a separate item. So if you're ever looking for the number that represents the property taxes that we receive, it's now included in the notes on page, or Note 2, which is on page 12 of the financial statements. The third thing that I wanted to mention is our employee future benefits. And if we look at the liability, it's increased by about $20 million. And that's a pretty significant amount. And what happened was, most of our employees have, well, our employees had an agreement where we were not eligible for retirement gratuities unless you had 20 years of service. Most of the province was at 10 years of service. So the province decided that they would, or they would decrease our eligibility to 10 years, but it was fully funded by the province. So that increased our liability. So we owe more to our employees, but they also increased our revenue. So they gave us that, about $25 million to cover it. So it didn't have an effect, but it does increase our liability. Also, we issued a long-term debt this year, about $46 million, to cover schools that we've built in the past. We can't issue it with the OFA until the schools are complete. So now that those schools are complete, we were able to issue that debenture. So that would be where a lot of our cash is coming from, between that debenture and the $25 million that we received from the province. And then also, mostly because of the changes in future benefits, our accumulated surplus went from a deficit of $3 million to a surplus of about $6 million. So all of that, it doesn't mean that we made $9 million this year, and I want to stress that. What it is, is because of the changes in our employee future benefit gratuities. And in fact, if you look at Note 12, which is on page 12, or 9.23, it shows the makeup of the accumulated surplus. And that first line, which is called the unappropriated surplus, is really the money that doesn't have any restrictions on it. And it actually only increased by about 375 million, or sorry, $1,000,000 this year. Sorry, that would be nice. But about 375,000. So really, on a $500 million budget, that's less than a tenth of a percent. So that's pretty good budgeting. And I can't take credit for it because I wasn't here, but it's pretty good. So we're very happy to bring forward these financial statements. Thank you.
I'll ask you to stay for any questions that may occur around the table. Yes, Trustee Bishop.
So, Madam Chairman, unfortunately, I can't find the page. But the amount that we receive in taxes from the city could, perhaps, that could be explained a little further. So I know this is in a general assessment pool for the whole province. Is this the amount, well, maybe, maybe I won't ask the questions. Maybe if I could just ask through you, that this be more fully explained for us?
And that is the taxes received?
That tax, yes. We've always known that we receive taxes. But if that could be explained, where this comes from, how this fits into the general assessment as a provincial assessment, et cetera.
Thank you very much, Superintendent.
Great. So through the Chair, the municipal taxes are based on people who are paying into the public school board in our city. So when we do the grant revenue calculation, if we calculated the grant revenue, say, at $1 million, that our board was going to receive $1 million, whatever the portion that is received from the city, so people paying into the public board is decreased or is deducted from that amount. So if we collected $100,000 in municipal taxes, then the province would make up that $900,000 difference. So total grant is always going to be the same, no matter what. Whatever we collect from the municipalities comes off of that total amount and the province makes up the difference. So depending, it doesn't matter what we receive from the municipality, our grant revenue will stay the same. It's just whether or not it's the amount that the province has to make up.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, moved for approval from Trustee Turkstra, seconded by Trustee White, the consolidated financial statements of Hamilton Wentworth District School Board. All those in favor? Yes, thank you. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. We then move to Item 10, a response to the school board efficiencies and modernization consultations. Is this a matter, Trustee Bishop, that you would want to start off with commentary?
Madam Chairman, this letter is, we indicated through the Finance Committee that we would be bringing this letter to you. It's in response to the government's school board efficiencies and modernization consultations. And as you will remember, the school board efficiencies and modernization consultation is using underutilized and small schools. It's one of the ways in which there will be significant savings for the province. So as we have done a great deal of work in this area, we use this opportunity, Madam Chairman, to put down both the importance that we saw of eliminating underutilized space, but also the challenges involved in this process. As you can see, explained in the, in the, in those paragraphs there, Madam Chairman. Declining enrollment supports, but also, we hoped that if they were phased out, they would be phased out in time. Because if they're going to be dependent on the removal of underutilized space in our schools, that takes a considerable amount of time. As we all know, we began 1911, I'm sorry, 2011 with the report to, the ARC reports, we made decisions in 2012. It'll be 2016 before we see new schools and the whole process finally completed. So that is another part that we're showing here. The province asked us to look at e-learning as a means of saving money. I think all boards are extremely nervous about that and using the use of new technologies. So we've responded to the items in the original consultation paper, but with some old-standing issues that we have reused in inappropriate places. So I hope that you will see both some new material, but also some very old material about our concerns, including our concerns about special education funding, which we snuck in there. So, Madam Chairman, I'm hoping that this meets everyone's approval.
Thank you very much for that. This would come under my signature as Chair of the Board. I just want to be sure that it meets with everyone's approval in terms of what we need to say and what we want said. Could I then have a motion, sorry, Trustee Turkstra, something else?
I greatly appreciate the content of the report. And, you know, as Trustee Bishop has said, a lot of it is what we've been saying for years, which hasn't been addressed, which is quite frustrating. Because we spend a lot of time writing these reports and to no avail. And I did see some new content, which was great. But I think what I wanted to try and add, if I could, is that we also support OPSPAs' report on school board efficiencies and modernization consultations. We would have all received it in our emails. Theirs is much longer and obviously has a broader content. But maybe at the end, we want to support OPSPAs' recommendations as well. And because, you know, in their report, you know, I am one of the rural schools trustees, and they do talk about defining a small school and a rural school. Because there seems to be some type of perception in the public that we're trying to make all schools 500 to 600 people place and that, you know, we're going to make, well, they call them super schools, which they aren't. And in OPSPAs' report, they were talking about actually defining what a rural school is and what a small school is and their value to the community.
So would you want that particular section even more highlighted?
I would love to have it added for ours, that we would like that further defined. But if we just support OPSPAs, I think it's probably enough.
Okay, thank you. I'm seeing nods around the table on that.
Madam Chair, I believe that we would, that that's an omission on our part and that we, of course, want to not show that we're in any kind of difference of opinion with OPSPAs. This is written very much from a Hamilton Wentworth District School Board point of view. But I believe that we, in general, share all the concerns of the OPSPAs' report.
Wonderful. So, yes, Trustee Mahal? If that was sent to us? I do not believe we have copies of that report in front of us, no. So I wonder then if we could have, just because of discussion, if we could have a motion to accept this with the additional comments? Would that be acceptable to you, Trustee Turkstra? And do I have a second here for that? Trustee Bishop, any other commentary on the motion? All those in favor? That's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. We are now at Item 11. And given the fact that I'm the former Chair of Governance and part of having put this report together, then I'm asking the Vice Chair of the Board to preside over this matter and I will make my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are on Item Number 11, which is the Governance Report from November 25th regarding trustee ward allocation. So I'll turn it to the Chair of Governance from November 25th, Trustee Brennan, when you are ready.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just to first put a context for the part of the process that we are in right now. The trustees will remember that we came, the Governance Committee came before this body to discuss that this would be a timely matter to discuss in our communities and around the table with each other about how we align our wards with the number of trustees that we have. We then went out for some feedback from the community in terms of a survey. We did have a proposed, or at least an option, that went out with the survey. And then we've received commentary through the survey. And the Governance Committee is putting before you a notion that has come out of its discussions. So just in terms of process, I wanted to be sure that people understood that this has already been before the trustees. Just as a preliminary discussion, out again for community input through a survey, back to governance, in which there was conversation, and then a recommendation before you, which is Option 3B, be approved. That would put wards 1 and 2 with one trustee. It would put 2... Sorry, my apologies, I'm not reading very well. I've got new glasses, but it's obviously not helping. 1 and 12 would be one trustee. 2 and 3 would be one. 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 would each have one. 9, 10, and 11 would have 2. And 13, 14, and 15 would have 2. The Chair, that's the report. I'm pleased to discuss any element of this. And I wait for your direction.
Great, thank you. Trustee Brennan, are you moving your report? Just to clarify, are you, you're looking for discussion first?
Mr. Chair, normally I would want to make the motion, but I think this is of the kind of matter that maybe a discussion in this case might be best.
Okay.
As you know, it is an arithmetic problem. We have 15 wards, but we are only allowed to have 11 ward trustees. And so we have struggled often over the years with how do 11 trustees share the responsibilities of 15 wards? So it is a discussion I know the trustees may wish to have before we move towards motions in action.
Thank you, Trustee Brennan. So I'll open it up to the floor for discussion, just to let folks know briefly what's in their package. You will see the recommendation from the Governance Committee, which was Option 3B. Also included was the previous option of a center for consultation, also known as 2A. And then, of course, there are maps included that are the status quo. So there are roughly three options and maps and background that are attached to this report. So we'll open it up for discussion and debate. I saw Trustee Hicks.
My question was process, and I think you've answered it because you said that one of the options could be the status quo. Is that, as far as if we...
I think what we heard from the community through the survey, for those who participated in the survey, was that as much as possible, excuse me, Mr. Chair, let me answer the direct question. And that is, how much did the Governance Committee pay attention to the status quo, which is the way it is right now? We certainly, in early days, talked a great deal about it. The challenge with the status quo, again, for some of you around the table, this has come before us before. And it does seem to be the issue that starts us on to the conversation. And that is the coupling of Ward 11 with Ward 12. And that's Winona and Ancaster, essentially. And the geographical difference and the largeness of that, plus the fact that Ward 11 students feed into high schools that are not in Ward 11 or 12. One of the matters that we did see from the survey, those who participated in the survey, was that the notion of feeder schools going into a high school was important. And that, and keeping that continuous education under the same trustee to the extent that was possible was a desirable. So we did look at the status quo in our most recent meeting, but felt that Option 3B was preferable than continuing to couple wards 11 and 12.
Trustee Hayes? Trustee Jonstone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In so much of communities, wards 11 and wards 12 are very different. And certainly, when I spoke with school communities in Ward 11, they had expressed a very strong desire to pair with the rest of Stony Creek. Their schools feed into the high schools in that area and that resulted in a very strong desire for them to be paired. And that makes sense. Issue arose, however, with Ancaster. There seemed to be strong feedback from the Dundas community that they preferred to pair with Mambrel. And then subsequently, when the proposal came out to pair with Ward 1 in Westdale, that they also felt that there was little in common with the Ancaster community. When I spoke with school council chairs during the first round, so at Dundas and Ancaster match, the Ancaster community was okay with that. During the second proposal, however, for Westdale and Ancaster, there was not a desire. What I was hearing from many school council chairs was that they would rather remain status quo. I'm feeling tonight that I could either support status quo, although that would do, I think, a significant disservice to Ward 11, or I could support Ancaster with Dundas. Certainly, because I do believe that it has, you know, more in common geographically. I also believe that it serves the purpose of reducing in terms of the number of schools that are currently represented in Ward 11 and 12, it's a large area, there's many schools, there's currently 12 schools. If it was to be matched with Dundas, we would reduce that down to 11 schools. As opposed to if we were to match Ancaster with Westdale, we would go up to 13 schools. So, and also, when I was looking at the previous consultation figures for the Dundas-Ancaster proposal, there was 40% who said that they thought that was ineffective. But there was also 60% who said, to some degree, they thought that it was effective. In that range, in terms of the number of effectiveness. So I saw that is, it was a clear majority of people who would rather have, or that were okay with having a Dundas-Ancaster mix. So that's where I'm standing tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Jonstone. Trustee Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As was obvious from the committee report, I was not in favor of Option 3B. Because this would create, for Ward 1 and Ward 12, actually the biggest ward in the whole city, it would be larger than Ward 7, which is a very, very large ward. It has a population of 17,085 public supporters, 14 schools. It would have two wards together, which share very little in common. They're divided by, they're, have no linkages in terms of, or will have no linkages as the program strategy moves out in terms of sharing any students between the two wards. And at the same time, Ward 1 will have three primary schools coming from Ward 2 that will be feeding into Westdale, who will have a lot of needs. So then this, we're creating a ward, which will have a huge amount of work, which hasn't got much in common. And then the most difficult thing is that it will also, in essence, increase the representation of those in the suburbs. Because I know it's only a Clark vote, but I think it would be very difficult for the person representing Westdale-Ancaster to actually be able to also represent the lower-city component, which is a component of Ward 1. So I could see it as not very practical. I also felt that the Ward 1 and Ancaster parents were not given this in the original consultation. So that was not a very, they didn't have a chance to look at it. I note that, you know, the response that we got from the public, that actually less people are satisfied with the option that we put before them than they are with what we have at the moment. You'll notice that 85% feel that it's relatively effective, what we have at the moment, considering all the constraints we have on visiting wards, which are very different in size, very different in population, and that we have 11 trustees to fit into these 15 wards. I think what we have to decide as a group tonight is, how important is it to us that Winona's needs are more appropriately served than we looked at in terms of Ancaster? And the Ancaster trustee, and then Chief Ancaster's also got to do the South rural area and that Winona tucked onto the end of Stony Creek. So that has always been a concern. It's one that has been driving us to look for change. And if we look for, trying to address that particular issue, then we have the problem of where to place Ancaster. Remembering also that Dundas is currently, or will be, one of the smallest wards in the city. And the current, the award, and the recommendation of Option 3B doesn't do anything about dealing with Dundas and Waterdome, and leaves them to trustees. So, Mr. Chair, I'm opposed to Option 3B. I think there are some possibilities with the option we took out for consultation. Or like the previous speaker, I could also look at the status quo.
Okay, further discussion, Trustee Orville.
He was the Chair. When I look at the purpose of our ward allocation, what to service our wards and our students and communities. A lot has been said about where these kids go or what high school they feed into. You know, when you look at my ward, Ward 7, I only had two middle schools going to the New Souths. The rest of them are all Ward 6 students. And as it is, with my regular ward, I don't mean regular, I mean the former allocation, what we had, I had 4,500 families that would be going to Ward 6. So here I am, looking at the options. Ward 7 is the largest ward in the city of Hamilton. And I'm not talking rural here, with 14 schools. And I have the highest number of students, not the highest, I have over 6,700. And I look at the combinations of 9, 10, and 11. Those combinations net to 18 schools. I have 14 alone. And you'll have two trustees. And the total number of students are 7,700. Now, if you look at 13, 14, and 15, we have 17 schools for those three wards. 17 schools, two trustees, and a total of 7,400 students. Now, you're saying, well, where's the need? Well, I'm sorry. I think all schools and wards have needs. They all have poverty in their areas, as do other areas. Now, there are assumed that Ancaster is rich. There are assumptions. And Waterdome. But you know what? Those are just assumptions. There are people in need, in my ward. So what is the definition of poverty? I have a family, two parents work. They have four children and have to pay $71 a month for transportation to high school. So those are, so what is the definition of poverty? I think the definition of poverty is what the unit family can bear and what their income is and what their housing situation is. Now, if you look at this, I cannot support this at all because you have, you're going to make all kinds of assumptions here. When I use the word... When I used the word, as a consultant, the Ward 1 and 2 area, you know what? I used to deliver toy vouchers, food, to those poverty-stricken families. Are you saying that we have an economically deprived area? Which, by the way, I don't think it's fair to say that about communities. So there you have, are you saying you're going to support these people by being their voice? Are you gonna take them through clothing? And so, that's what I did when I had those areas, and I worked very hard at that. So when I think about this, you're gonna give two trustees to those three combinations? Excuse me, I have difficulty with that. Now, I remember the days, and I'm sure my colleague, trustee Hicks, will remember, when we had three trustees in Ward 7, and three in Ward 8.
Two.
Two in Ward 8, and three in Ward 7. So what I'm trying to say is, in all fairness, I don't think the survey with its results was that, I don't think they understood it well. You look at Dundas, you've got seven date respondents. The second highest of that was Ward 7 with 25. The rest were down, what, 1, 2, 3, 4 respondents? So does that mean to you, Mr. Chair, that the community understood what we're trying to say? I'm sorry, I don't feel that way about it. I cannot support this, and there's another reason for it. I thought that the city is going to go through the ward system in next year, the next time round, over the next election. So I'd like to know what's going on there with regard to the councilors. They have wards that they have to serve. And they'll tell you that the government says every time we have a new survey, 20% or more have to be in computer housing. What am I saying?
That's right. Yeah, trustee Orville, I'm not gonna cut you off, but your time is up. If you wanna finish up.
I did say that I hope that we will listen to the survey, or do we believe in surveys? If we believe in them, then let's follow what the respondents say. If you don't believe in them, or you didn't conduct the survey accurately, Mr. Chair, I believe the items on the survey were not in the way I would see a test, or a psychological test, being conducted in my experience. So I'm having trouble, and I thank you for listening, and I cannot support the combination of wards, I'm sorry. I think children and families need help in all areas.
Thank you, trustee Orville. Further debate. Trustee Terstrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is certainly complicated. I mean, I looked at so many permutations and combinations, and that's wrong of me to do that, because I don't know the other wards. You could say, oh, well, you could do 1, 2, 3 with two trustees, and then 4, 5, 6 with two trustees, and then why isn't 8 with number 12? Then number 8 and number 12 would say, no way! I mean, it's difficult, right? I mean, if you just do the math, you could come up with something quite easily. But these are communities, and, you know, we all know our communities separately. So, a couple of questions. When is the hard date deadline for this? Is it the end of December, or is it March?
It would be the end of March.
End of March. And that's because that's when people can put in their name for a vaccine.
They usually register as early as January 2nd.
With knowing your...
They have the preliminary status quo up, and then technically could have until the end of March to submit a new reorganization.
Okay, and the other question is, is there any way of adding trustees? Or are we hard-capped at 11?
I'll go to the chair of governments.
Yeah, I'm very sore to say that that has been hard-capped, I believe, about four years ago. And the ministry was extremely magnanimous, saying that if you wish to reduce your number of trustees, please feel free to do that. However, we cannot add. Now, previous to four years ago, and I hope I have the time period right, you could at least make a case for wanting more. And it was based on the number of supporters, and there was a calculation and such. But as I say, and occasionally, a ward would in fact get an increase. But about four years ago, that was stopped. So there are some wards, even more so than us, where they have not asked for more trustees in the period of time when they could have, and they are very underserved in the democratic process.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly, absolutely support Ward 13 and Ward 14 being together. All of Ward 14 feeds into 13, and it makes perfect sense. Now, in the same breath, I can say that I've been representing Wards 14 and 15 for the last, I mean, my eighth year now, and those wards could not be more different. And only Milbro feeds to Spencer Rowley. And one of them is rural, declining enrollment, and the other one is expanding at, you know, quite a rate that isn't, that I would actually question the data in this. It says that Waterdown's population has gone down since 2006 compared to 2011. Is it possible? So I don't, I don't trust this data in the first place. And it says that I have in Wards 14 and 15 12 schools, I don't, I have 11. So there are some problems with the data. I see Ward 15 in the very, very near future, meeting its own trustee. They're already at, you know, 3,500 students, and that's gonna be expanding. So I don't see Ward 12 and Ward 1 together. They don't, even the French immersion program doesn't feed in. They have absolutely nothing in common. 15 and 1 would make more sense, just for the French immersion piece. Because at least the students in Waterdown, if they choose French immersion, will go to Westdale. Those are the only commonalities I see there. So, I mean, I think either we look at coupling other wards together, like we are with 9, 11, 13, 14, 15, where you kind of share some workload, and you get a better grasp socio-economically of different wards besides your own. I'm not against that type of combination. So I guess I'm not exactly supporting what trustee Orville is saying. We have one each, we can't, we only have 11 trustees for 15 wards. So then, through you, do we look at any trustees being at large for the entire system?
I'll go to the chair of governments.
Very early days in this process, we did have a discussion, but it seemed undoable. It would be like every trustee having to run a Maramo Tea campaign partly, and then really sharing the responsibilities would be quite complicated. So I think it was considered briefly and not included in one of the options.
So, just to add on to that, because when I see someone who bravely puts forward their name for the chair of the board, I don't actually see them as representing a particular ward. I see the chair of the board as the trustee of march for all communities. They go to breakfast, lunches, and dinners across the entire system, representing the entire system. So I don't, I think, you know, we kind of need to look at that role in a different way. So I'm just putting that out there for thought. I don't think I could support the one that's on the table, even though I highly encourage, like, I had a heart of support Ward 13 and 14 being together. I don't see 12 and 13 and, like, trustee Johnston together. 12 and 13 are as different as 12 and 1. They don't have any schools that feed together. They're separated by the escarpment, which isn't, shouldn't be a barrier, but unfortunately is. And they're probably too socio-economically alike, which was represented in the paper today. So I think we should continue to look at it. But maybe we won't make it for the March deadline. But I think that, you know, there's probably some validity to consider maybe not making the decision tonight, but to think about it again through a different lens.
Thank you, trustee Terstrow. Trustee Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was used to the governance, and we've all lamented over this for a long time. We have, we don't have a perfect setup here, and we never have. But, and I can see, you know, you can see some of the good thinking when people are talking maybe about 13, 14 together, maybe 15, maybe 12 and 13, maybe 12 and 1, 2 and 3, but it's a domino effect. So whatever we do affects something else, and again, it becomes imperfect. And, you know, the more I look at this, I'd really like to finish this tonight, whether we remain status quo, and that's sort of what I'm hearing around here. At least that's what my ears are hearing, that people aren't looking to go from one imperfect scenario to another imperfect scenario. It would be a lot easier if the city did reject the ward boundaries. It would be much easier if the ministry allowed us one ward trustee, not 14,000 apiece, I say word hard. You know, it would really simplify the difficulties here. You know, I also worry personally, you know, I also worry that, yeah, I'm not intimate with all the communities in the city. I have a fair understanding, but not like the individual ward trustees are. And I wouldn't want to go from one imperfect system and create change in a situation that's really not gonna make anything better. And because, you know, we, we're in a, we're in a state of change at this ward, for a number of reasons, declining enrollment, technology, and for many other reasons that everybody knows why we're here. So I would like to drop this, next time it comes around. Hopefully, the council will reject things. This ward will be further along in its arcs. And those decisions will have been finished, and go from there. But change for the sake of change is, I don't see the point in that.
Thank you, trustee Simmons. Trustee Maholland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to say a few things, I won't now, I'll just say that I will be supporting the status quo.
Thank you, trustee Maholland. Further discussion. Trustee Blaisser.
You know, just having come back on, but having done the large ward for four years, I would still support status quo over some of the decisions that I'm seeing here. I think our communities are gonna be going through enough the next year, two years, that I think we need to, we need to support our communities the way they are in the continuity. So I would support status quo.
Thank you. I think that's all the trustees. Oh, trustee, yes, trustee Peddell.
Thank you. I want to interrupt. So when I look at this, I'm having listened to whatever I'm saying. I think that whatever we do is always going to be somewhat imperfect, and it absolutely is, it's a numbers game. But I'm trying to look at this through a finer window. Where are we gonna be as we change the system? And how do we then balance out the numbers? So I have a question first, before I finish my comments. The question is, are these school student numbers, are student numbers not from city data or from our data? And if it's from our data, is it actually truly cast by wards? Or is it being cast by theater schools? So that the data is not totally representative of the political representation?
I'll go to the director.
I agree, Mr. Chair, I'm looking to the facilities officer for assistance to that question.
I agree, Mr. Chair, those are our enrollment numbers.
And to clarify, trustee Peddell's question, that is by ward, not schools?
Yes.
Yes, Ward. Okay. Trustee Peddell.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you reinterpreted my question for me. I think the officer just said that it was our data, therefore it must be by schools, not by political boundaries. Am I not correct?
Mr. Director, to the facilities officer.
I agree, Mr. Chair, it is our data. We have the ability to geocode students based on their home residence, and then summarize them based on trustee board.
Trustee Peddell.
So it's absolutely purely by political ward? That's the answer?
That's correct.
Okay, so if that's the case, then I guess we're working with some pretty good data, except there's one flaw. We've been given data by the groupings of wards, and we haven't been given the data by each individual ward. So to be clear, what I'm thinking is, I know the numbers of Wards 1 and 2 combined. I'd like to know the numbers of Ward 1 separately, Ward 2 separately. We've been given numbers for combining 9, 10, and 11, and various variations of that, as well as with 13, 14, and 15, although we do know Dundas on its own. So what I'm getting at is, it's kind of difficult to try to balance this when the groupings have been given to us, as opposed to given the groupings, but also breaking down so that I can see the separation.
So just a quick, trustee Peddell, trustee Peddell? Trustee Peddell, can you hear me?
We know that there's growth.
Laura, trustee Peddell, can you hear me, Laura? Yeah, just answer your question on the individual ward breakdown. On 11, 3, and 11, 4, it does break it down by individual ward? Yeah, 11, 3, 11, 4, and it's broken down, as the facilities officer mentioned, by where the students live.
11, 3 has a mass of the ward boundaries, I'm looking at that.
Correct.
Okay, that is accurate. Okay, so I apologize for that. Maybe I didn't get a part of my answer, but I still want to make my comment before we vote. And we only have growth happening in three areas. One is Bitterwick, it's exploding. Waterdown, which was exploding before Bitterwick, and a small pocket with an Ann Castor, but not anything that has probably been in any way different, or totally fallen out of the water on numbers for representation. So when I look at the options that are due to it, that only includes status quo, and 3D, and 2A, I don't actually like any of them. I actually think Waterdown probably should stand on its own two states, with its own trustee in the future, it doesn't need to be combined. And then 14 and 13 do make a nice pairing. I also think that, you know, that perhaps 1 and 2 should stay together, just as they are, and we should be putting, sorry, I already said that, Dundas, 13, and 14. So in short, I guess right now, tonight, I'm not happy with any of these options. And I'm not sure how it would result, since I know it was already a mating night to go to the government and debate it further. So I guess all I can tell you right now is that I can't support any of these three options. I'd be very pleased to entertain some more shit, but maybe a board meeting tonight is not the place. So if that's where this debate ends up going, I would be happy to, not right now, but at the right time, after other people have finished up, maybe refer this back to the government, and ask them to have another kick if they can, talk about how we might blend this together.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, trustee Peddell. Okay, so all trustees have spoken. I did want to add myself to the list briefly, just because this is an issue that concerns all trustees. So I'll take a step back, hold my little chair of this item, but I'll put on a different hat for a moment. As most of you know, I put a lot of work through governance into a number of these scenarios, and brought a number of scenarios forward to governance. And I know a lot of the comments today have been about the flaws in some of the two new proposals and alternate proposals. But what I think we're forgetting are the flaws in the status quo. Because to me, the status quo is absolutely broken. When you look at Dundas, and we all love Dundas, especially this person to my right, Dundas is the smallest ward in the entire 15 wards. So we're talking about combined wards. So we're talking about combined wards on 11 and 12. 11 is larger than Dundas, why is that not standing alone? 14 is larger than Dundas in terms of students, why is that not standing alone? There could be made a case for any other ward than, other than Dundas in terms of size. So Dundas is incredibly small. And we know that in the future, it's going to be paired with another ward. So then, just simply look at the map, and look around Dundas, you don't have many options. You either have 12, you have 1, and you could be 14, but then 15 becomes a bit of an item. So the two scenarios you have in front of you, you see Dundas with Ward 12, or you see Dundas in a bit of a triplet with wards 14 and 15. And that's where the problem occurs, is where do you put Dundas? The other issue is when you look at number 11, this is the other monstrosity, when you look at problems with the status quo. Students, and we're not just talking Winona, but we have Glanbrook as well. They feed to Salt Lake, Winona feeds to Orchard Park. And some go to Ancaster, that's right. And then the Ancaster students go to Ancaster. So you have one trustee representing three high schools, two of which they have no direct contact with in terms of the high school level, they're not a trustee for that school. So if I were to look at 12, the Ancaster paired with Westdale or Dundas, at least those students in those two wards are attending a high school that's represented by their own trustee, whereas 11 right now has no representation from a trustee at the high school level, for the most part. So what I liked about the new groupings, and this is what we heard through the feedback, it comes down to the idea that the community, and what we originally wanted was to group theater schools with high schools. We wanted that high school street, that was the original goal. And this proposal did that in the best way possible. You take any ward, but probably the exception of Ward 7 on the mountain, which we really haven't found any options whatsoever for, you see students being represented by a trustee going to their high, through their theater schools, to their high school, and you are actually voting for the trustee who represents you, rather than say, you get a call, and they're calling the Orchard Park, you know, trustee, or the Salt Lake trustee, when you're represented by the Ancaster/11 trustee. So this grouping, I think, is the best-case scenario. But once again, it's not to say these two options are perfect or even wonderful. The reality is they are imperfect, as we've all pointed out. But when you look at the status quo, to me, it's absolutely horrible. And there are clear portions that could be improved. So I personally would go with more or less any option but the status quo. And I personally would not settle with that. So I'll keep my comments there, and at this point, I'll step back from the chair. And I will look to trustees, everyone has spoken once. At this point, we're either looking for a motion or to move to the next item. So is there any?
Do I make the motion?
Trustee? So if I had trustee Peddell first, trustee Peddell, your motion?
I would like to move that we combine Ward 13 and 14. That Ward 15 stand alone, and everything else stays the same. I'll fix it up, I've done this number again.
So your board, so just to clarify, to see if we can have a second there, to clarify, you are saying that 13 and 14 become one, 15 stands alone?
Right.
Okay, so we would still have two trustees among those three wards. So it's basically, so are you basing it off of the status quo or the proposal called 3A?
I'm basing it on the status quo.
So you're looking at the status quo with just rejigging 13, and 14, and 15 standing alone. Okay. So just to clarify for trustees, when Laura was trustee Peddell is moved, we do not yet have a second there, so we're not debating it yet. But just for clarity, trustee Peddell is saying, taking the status quo map, so if everyone can flick to 11, 9 is the status quo. So 11, 9, instead of... And when you see 13, 14, and 15, right now 14 and 15 are combined, but trustee Peddell is suggesting that 13 and 14 are combined, and 15 stand alone, and the rest of the wards remain the same. Is that right, trustee Peddell?
That's right.
Okay, do we have a second there for that scenario? Seconded by trustee Terstrow. So the motion is on the floor. Trustee Peddell, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, I will. And if you're pointing me to that page, because I somehow missed it, I would print all this out whenever I'm away, there's too much paper for a tree, I do sometimes miss these things. So I am going to go back and look at the numbers, and I'd like to, first of all, out of respect for Ward 7, I unfortunately don't know how to fix that one right now. I'll look forward to the day that this is being rejigged, and maybe Ward 6 is down, I'll balance out a little bit. So easy for them, they don't want to do it, so I'm sorry that we can't fix that one. And it's going to stay high with its numbers. But the ones that we can fix, if we look at putting Dundas with Ward 14, our total number has become 4,019. And that's very balanced with the numbers in many of the rest of the wards, except for Ward 7. And if we look at Water Down area, Ward 15 on its own, it's 3,473 now, and all that just shy of, or just over 500 left. We know it's not a gargantuan growth first, so it will catch up and no tie at all while the combined Dundas and 14 will be decreasing. So at least they're closer to balance than the way we have it right now. And I only have, we only have one trustee to kind of play with in those numbers. I'd love to be able to go around and do something with the Winona Ancaster area as well, but I can only, and I know it's going to grow as well, so I think that's still a future problem, Ancaster on its own is 3,232 out of a total 6,530. So it's actually bigger than Ward 7 geographically and one of those numbers. So I don't know how we can split that unless we, if somebody wants to do it in the amendment, if we somehow take part of the lower part of Winona and split that into 9, 10, I don't think, I don't think we have that right, so I don't think that's our boundary point. I don't think it's an actual ward. Is this, I think I did, I have that a little question.
Yeah, just the answer to that, 11, 3 is Glanbrook, now 4, Winona, and a couple are smaller. That we have, sir.
That's right, Ancaster. Okay, so maybe we just carve it off, that's not Ancaster, I would add that to my motion, but I do still know how to fix this that one. I really like Ward 1 and 2 being together. So that's why I leave that a little bit to status quo, and say if we have to fix something, let's fix the little Dundas, and balance it a little bit, and let's fix Water Down so that we're ready for the future. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, trustee Peddell. To the second there, trustee Terstrow.
So...
Trustee Terstrow, go ahead.
So, I mean, I like the tweak, because it solves the Dundas Glanbrooke, I would say, support and community support in order to do that. And certainly Ward 15 has said to me, you know, at some point, they're going to be able to stand on their own, and, you know, I don't see why now can't be the time. So I support that, but I'm trying to figure out how we can fix, you know, maybe the 9, 10, 11, 12 in this same one-fell swoop. So I'm seeing it as half a solution, which is better than the status quo, definitely. So I'm supporting this amendment, but I want, or this motion, but I just, I'm going to look a little bit closer, or maybe trustee Johnstone can help us with the other area, but maybe she'll leave status quo alone.
Thank you, trustee Terstrow. Trustee Brennan.
Well, I certainly heard in the survey and the community input, that 14 and 13 together make a huge amount of sense. That's the theater schools, the elementary panel going into the high school in Dundas. And that's fantastic. Some people will know that almost all the transition work that we've been doing in Dundas, I have invited, and she has found time in her schedule to come, I've invited trustee Terstrow to be at all these meetings, because all of the elementary schools in her Ward 14 feed into the high school. So I think that is what we heard in the community survey, it what makes sense. And yes, it does open up the possibility for 15 to have its own trustee, because even the 13, 14, 15 struggling a bit about how the trustees would serve 15 in that combination. However, we're not getting to the crux of the matter, which was what started this in the first place, and that's 11 and 12 being coupled. And I too would love a magic wand that would find a way to solve that issue. I think we've run out of numbers to be able to have any of those stand alone, but I love the synergy of 9, 10, and 11 together. These students at 11 are going to either Orchard Park or Salt Lake, if it's 9 or 10. So I, and I think when governance came with the options 3Bs, we liked, at the time anyway, the synergy, or at least the symmetry, pardon me, it's a S-Y word, I'm mixing them up. Symmetry between what would be happening in the east and what would be happening in the west. So I do agree with this motion in the sense of 13 and 14 being together, but we're not getting at the other issue.
Trustee Hicks.
Speaking against the motion on the status quo tonight, and to take another look at it, because I feel strongly that this whole process was to try to solve the Binbrook area, and we haven't done that. What we've done is, I think trustee Simmons is saying, it's a domino effect. We've said, okay, well, we don't have to solve that now, because we're going to solve this one over here, and this one will take care of itself. We need some time on this, and we try to hit this, hit the mark by March, by the end of March. Band-aids approach here. We haven't, we were directed to look at the Binbrook, we haven't solved it. We've solved maybe the area for 13 and 14. So I think at this time, that we'd be better off serving the wards by staying with the status quo.
Thank you, trustee Hicks. Trustee Orban.
I appreciate my colleague from Texas saying that we can't solve Ward 7 this time round. Excuse me, either we try to put it forth, and choose a vice chair, you're unhappy with the status quo, I hope your community didn't hear that. Because your community, I think, love you, and I thought you loved your community. Having said that, I'm going to state, 13 and 14 do make sense for me, but not at the cost of, well, we'll fix you next time round. It's not fair to that public, and to other public. And I think we should, if we're going to do this, maintain the status quo, because if you give 15 their own trustee, you're giving them seven schools and 3,000 people. Excuse me, I have 14 and 6,000 people. You know, what are we doing here? We're paying favoritism, that's what it is. I don't blame the trustee from Water Down saying, thank you very much, I like 13 and 14. I do too, it makes sense. But not at the cost of others, and there will be changes coming up with the city councils and their wards. And so be it. Either we look at this in a, to optics that are fair to everyone, and not just pick a couple of areas, we'll fix you now, but not the others. No, that's not right for communities, and it's certainly not right for this trustee. So thank you, Laura, but I can't accept it.
Thank you, trustee Orban. Further debate, trustee Bishop.
Well, just briefly, Mr. Chair, I don't believe this solves anything at all. We could just as well document that up at Ward 11, which has, tell that population of 10,448 should have its own trustee, as Ward 15, which is a population of 6,974 students. Now, I'm talking about English public supporters. Remember that people asked us, if they said they came out in favor of the consolidation of having equal population of public school supporters at high school. So I follow the same, I follow the same, those others that really were just doing, were not solving anything, we certainly aren't solving the major problem of 12 and 11, and I think we're just staying with the status quo at this point.
Thank you, trustee Bishop. Trustee Johnstone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also speaking against the motion tonight, I would have to agree with the comments made by some of the other trustees. I believe that we really do need to look at this holistically, and that we need to do it right. My hope is that we proceed tonight with status quo, and my hope is that after this upcoming municipal election, that the city does create another ward in the Glanbrook area, that would make it easier. And I also would like to see this body advocate for another trustee, because I think that's really a correctional what we need, so that's where I stand.
Thank you, trustee Johnstone. Trustee Mahaland.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm going to not to add any more confusion, I'll call the question.
Okay, the question has been called by trustee Mahaland.
Do we have other speakers?
No, there are no other speakers currently on the list. That's right. So to that, do we need a second there for that? No, we do not, or?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do?
Yes, we do.
Yes, I'm... Okay, so it appears you do not need a second there to call the question, so to calling the question on Laura's motion, all in favor?
In favor.
What's the motion, please?
This is not, so, so clarified, this is not on the...
This is just, it's a...
Okay, and that leaves unanimous, including trustee Peddell. Okay, so the question has been called, the motion to repeat is status quo with the joining of 13 and 14, and Ward 15 standing alone. All in favor?
In favor.
Trustees Terstrow, trustee Brennan, trustee White, trustee Susick. Those opposed?
I'm going to get me.
Oh, and trustee Peddell, thank you. Those opposed? Trustee Glauzer, Hicks, Orban, Mahaland, Bishop, Johnstone, Ben Agnew, Simmons. So that motion is defeated. We are back to, well, no motion at this point. I see trustee Hicks, and trustee Hicks.
The motion has stayed with the status quo.
Okay, the motion on the floor is status quo, and that we looking for a second there. Trustee Mahaland has seconded, so on the floor now, we are looking at status quo. Question for clarification, trustee Bishop.
It's a question process, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I mean, if we're getting the status quo, we don't need a motion. I don't think that is a proper motion.
What, I...
It isn't a motion, because that's what we have at the moment.
Thank you, trustee Bishop, but my response to that, as chair of this item, is that there has been some discussion about directing this back to governance, and whether we are to continue. So status quo would mean that we will not continue with any further review of the wards of management, but I'll look to the move for trustee Hicks.
If I put it in another way, that...
You shall, if you may.
To reaffirm that we stay with the status quo, because we did do the report, and we did do the recommendations, so all...
And we did ask for it here. It's completely legitimate, so trustee Mahaland does second that. So on the floor, we do have reaffirming the status quo. We are opening the floor to...
Clarification?
Yes, clarification, trustee Peddell.
I did my part here, Laura. I heard the status quo, and I heard reaffirming the status quo. Which one is it?
Right now, the motion on the floor, that we reaffirm the status quo.
Reaffirm, okay. Do I have a question for good clarification?
On clarification.
Is that motion, the reaffirm is defeated, what does that mean?
If it's defeated, then the floor is open, and we shall either have a new motion, or we move on to the next item, and it will be up to the governance committee.
And so, for clarification, if we dispute status quo, doesn't that mean we have to have other alternatives?
That would be up to likely the governance committee to look at the rest of our options, and that would be up to the committee, and perhaps report back on heading forward.
So defeating the status quo does not mean that status quo is dead for, oh?
No, because that is currently what is in place, so it wouldn't be that... No, because that is currently what is in place, so it wouldn't be that status quo no longer exists, it's that fact that we are bound back beyond the item. So no, it does not destroy status quo, it just means that the debate continues. Thank you, trustee.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay, you're lost.
No, I'm, I'm actually thinking, you see, the reason you never have a motion about what you actually have already is if you defeat that motion, you left in a really difficult position. So I'm, I'm wondering why, the motion is on the box, we don't need to reaffirm it. If we do nothing tonight, we have, we have status quo. So I don't know why we would vote, and then if we get ourselves in a position, that's why I'm challenging the chair as to why we're having this motion. I'm sorry.
Okay, perhaps what we'll do is just clarify just for a moment. Thank you for your input, trustee Bishop. I'll look just to the mover for a second, and I'll provide some, trustee Hicks.
The clarification, if we don't go this direction, don't we have to deal with the recommendation that has come from the governance committee?
There is no motion on the floor from the recommendation from the governance.
That's what I asked, because when we first started this whole discussion, normally that the recommendation would be put on the floor, but to the kindness of the chair of governance, wanted to debate on it before. So all I'm saying is that if I withdraw my motion, do we, through the chair, do we have to deal with the original motion or recommendation treaty?
No, we do not, because it has not been moved at board, it has not been moved even by the chair of governance, governance.
Then I will withdraw.
So you withdraw. Trustee Simmons.
I'd like to make a motion that we ask the next ward to do what we asked this ward to do, and that was to look at the ward boundaries once the city has taken another look at.
Okay, so trustee Simmons has moved that we advise the next board to review trustee ward allocation. Is there a second round? Trustee Johnstone.
Do I have clarification on what happens to re- first one?
Trustee Peddell, it was withdrawn by the mover. Yes, so just to clarify, for you, is removed, withdrawn by the mover.
Oh, she can't hear us?
She can't hear us.
Trustee Peddell, can you hear us?
I couldn't hear trustee Hicks do that, and there was no kind of.
Yeah, that's right, I'm not sure if his mic was on, but he did withdraw the motion. Okay, so do we have this? So I think we have a second round from trustee Johnstone to advise the next board to review trustee allocation. So that motion is now on the floor. Comments, I'll look to trustee Simmons.
I think it's still, it's on its right.
Trustee Johnstone has a second round?
Yeah.
I think I suggest trustee Brennan.
Well, not wanting to sound like the veteran through the wars, let me, let me be the veteran through the wars. It somehow has been my good fortune, Mr. Chairman, to be either the chair of governance or the chair of the board when this item has come before us. And it has come before us every year in the, second to last year of Band-Aid, because that fits in with timing to do with the municipal elections. Again, it was always because of the coupling of 11 and 12. In some way, I may just support this. However, we made this kind of motion three years ago, and the city did not change the ward boundaries. And my understanding is the city was obligated by provincial legislation or at least guidelines to make the changes. So that would have involved quite a different change, adding, adding wards, redrawing boundaries. For me, this motion as it stands, unless it really emphasizes we will make these changes when the ward, the city has changed the boundaries, when it has redrawn the boundaries, otherwise we will be back here, or somebody will be back here again in four years.
Thank you, trustee Brennan. Do you have clarification from the mover?
Yeah, those were my words, actually. Once the city has, has relooked at the ward boundaries.
Okay, so we'll capture the, I think I made a, yeah, I tried to keep your motion, so once you get the record into the next board.
Once the city.
Once the city has reorganized.
The ward boundaries.
Ward, ward boundaries, that trustees consider new ward allocation. Okay, looking to trustee Turkstra.
So speaking against the motion, I can't imagine doing all of this work and then saying, oh, we don't have another perfect solution, so let's not do it, and we'll just leave it up to somebody else. I think we had a partially good solution that takes care of one part of the city that we consulted people on, and they favored it. Now, it doesn't take care of the Glanbrook problem, I realize that, but I don't think that the city is going to be in any rush to change it, and we have the opportunity to fix a problem that we have. And not doing it, I think, does not service our communities. So a partial solution is much better than a cock-up. Oh, we'll just leave it up to the next group. Maybe Glanbrook's going to be split in the future, maybe it's not. I just think, why go with maybes when we actually were able to come up with a partial solution that works for those communities? So absolutely against this.
Thank you, trustee Turkstra. Further discussion? Seeing no speakers, all in favor of trustee Simmons' motion. Trustees Glauzer, Hicks, Orban, Mahaland, Johnstone, Simmons, opposed. Trustees Turkstra, Brennan, White, Bishop, student trustee. Van Agnum, student trustee Susick, and trustee Peddell. That motion is defeated, or sorry, the motion is carried. So that ends the item. Thank you. Everyone, I'll move the chair for the next item to chair Brennan. And in fact, if we could take maybe a five-minute break, we'll all be back here shortly.
We're taking a break?
Yeah, Laura, we're taking five minutes.
We've never done that.
And trustees are returning from their five-minute break.
This was a really complex, it deserves a lot of thought, a lot more thought, I think, perhaps, in time. It does. Yeah, and I, you know, it comes from your next cabinet, I think, it's a fact, that I would end up supporting that, because my guess is that if we have wards repeated, it would be that new ward plus new pastor. That's my guess, that new Glanbrook ward.
But that's the way they should have gone.
Yeah. And.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that in the next election that they actually begin that work done. Well, we'll have to pressure the, there's that also.
Okay, trustees, we are on item 12. Report from the Standing Committee. And the vice chair might have thought, gosh, this is a board meeting, I don't have much to do. In the meantime, he's chaired a couple of items, given a couple of reports, and he has enough to do.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so I'm happy to present to you the report from the Standing Committee December 2nd, 2013. So just to summarize the happenings of the meeting, we received a Human Resources Committee report from November 7th, the, which included the intended support process and program alignment. We also received a Finance Committee report from November 20th, which included December Standing Committee reports, school board efficiency, the modernization and consultations, special education funding and budget consultation process, and budget priorities. From governance, we received a report from November 19th, which included the electronic participation policy as well as board allocation results. And lastly, and I'm sorry, just to clarify, so it's not a policies, it's governance, governance aid, I believe, so that's a clarify, I will fix. And lastly, the Policy Committee brought forward three items from November 21st, including the Transportation Policy Smoking Report, boundary review of policy which went to consultation, and lastly, the meeting remaining a school policy revision. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm happy to move my report.
Thank you for that. Trustee White, do I have a second round for that? Trustee Glauzer, thank you very much. Just a minute.
Yes, and, yes, my whole act, actually, this is from the agenda, I just noticed it now, but in the report, there was a final item, notice motion from trustee Johnstone, which was amended to the Long-Term Facilities Master Plan Accommodation Review Schedule. So that's not on the agenda, we just noticed that, and it is also part of the report from Standing Committee. And it's, it's not on the agenda portion, it is in the report in your package on item 12, if you look on your cover page, it's not listed on your cover page, so just so you know, not overlook that item. So that is part of the report as well. And once again, Madam Chair, I'm happy to move it.
And thank you for the clarification. Again, moved by trustee White. Trustee Glauzer, you're still prepared to second that? Thank you.
I'd like to vote on 9 separately, please.
Okay, let's, thank you very much. We have had a request to vote on 9 separately. Yes, trustee Hicks?
I think on item 9, I think I'd like to vote on something, so if one, trustee White, dominant, it is on here, but it's in our package.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, thank you. So to the other matters. Trustee White moved by trustee Glauzer that the other items in the Standing Committee report are approved, all those in favor?
Favor.
Yeah, that is carried unanimously, thank you very much. Now to item 9. Trustee Peddell, did you wish to start?
No, I already based my vote on the number last week.
Okay. Trustee Hicks?
Through the chair, I was not at that meeting, I apologize, but I cannot support the direction of delaying the accommodation review. I don't think it's fair to the communities for reviewing the accommodation review. I don't think it's fair to the communities for reviewing the accommodation reviews now. And I think the optics of it is not correct. I think Trustee Peddell stated that in her remarks when she was here. So I will be speaking against the question.
Thank you, Trustee Hicks. Any other commentary? Trustee White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I did get a chance to speak to the item last week, but I just wanted to add that I do support the motion. There are a number of great reasons, I think, to support this motion. One that we focused on last week was the election and change of trustees on the accommodation reviews. But in addition to that, when we look at our number of communities at the current moment that are in transition, there's a lot of work that needs to be done by staff. And to go through a number of further accommodation reviews leaves a number of our communities in flux. So I think there's probably an argument from several points of view, from a staff point of view, trustee point of view, community point of view, that this process could be delayed by one simple year. So I do thank Trustee Johnstone for turning out this motion. I do support it. And I think as a result, we'll be able to move ahead, actually, in much clearer fashion as a result. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Yes, Trustee Johnstone?
Yes, through the chair. What I really want to highlight here is that half the trustees around this table have indicated, you know, that they want these to come re-election. That's a huge portion of the board that will be coming in partly through accommodation review. And I think that is the right thing to do, as in the best interests of community, to ensure that there's consistent trustee throughout the entire process of the accommodation review. I think our communities deserve that.
Okay, thank you then. Trustee Hicks, for a second time?
No, I just want to, because I was asking, I'm not quite sure on the actual process. Because the one that you're delaying, there's another one after that that completes the elementary. Because you're delaying that, does that mean that the one in 2015 now will be 2016? Is there a domino effect that pushes the last elementary instead of happening in 215 after 260?
I'm seeing glaws around the head, but I think I will double-check with the director.
Through you, Madam Chair. As staff understands the motion should it pass, that it simply takes the schedule and moves them all back one year.
Thank you. To the motion then. Sorry, yes, Trustee Mahalund?
No, confused on that. So, Madam Director, through the chair, Director. So what you're saying is the arcs that we are working on now, that the community is expecting us to bring board recommendations in January 21st, so that goes to you and the board? That they're not going to come forward until the next spring?
Yes, if you could clarify that, Mr. Director.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry if I can cause confusion. No, we would complete the arcs that we are presently in. Reports would come to this board in February. Decisions would be made before the end of the school year. And then a year would wait if the motion passes. And then we would begin with the new arcs the year after.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, Trustee Mahalund?
A little further. It's not what Trustee thinks, though, is the thing that dipped the arc. That I've been working now, the urgent board recommendation for a school to close September 2015. Does that mean it will close in 2016?
Thank you, Trustee Mahalund. Director?
Through you, Madam Chair. It would, not think that this motion, let me say it this way. This motion does not in any way impact the arcs that are presently happening. So no, the decisions made by this board next spring, whatever year those decisions would be made, would still continue to be implemented. This motion would only speak, as I understand it, to arcs that have not yet started. It would take a year, and then they would happen.
Thank you. So to the motion moved by Trustee White, signed by Trustee Glaser. That, that, that part of the long-term facilities plan, sorry, that staff incorporates a break in the accommodation review schedule for the 2014-15 school year for the reasons outlined in the discussion. All those in favor? Trustee Terstra, Glaser, Orban, White, Brennan, Bishop, Johnstone, Student Trustee Van Egdom, Student Trustee Suzik, Trustee Simmons. All those opposed? Trustee Hicks, Trustee Mahalund, and Trustee Peddell. The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you very much. We are, we're coming to one of the more collateral subjects of our agenda. And that is the report from our student trustees, and who have been involved in local activities, and then the Ontario Student Trustees Association report. And I see Trustee Van Egdom has turned on a microphone, so I'll assume, and she's going to go first. Please.
I am. So, through the chair, I'm just to tell you guys about what's going on locally first, and then I'll tell you all about OSTA. So we have, our next meeting is Wednesday, and what we're going to be talking about at this meeting is brainstorming more about the initiatives going on within our board, which Senate has planned and discussed and have decided upon, which are planning a mental health summit, which we talked to one of the mental health workers for the board today and discussed about some possible ideas that we could, or routes we could go for this. And we have decided on running a summit through Senate, with the senators running it themselves, and trying to incorporate student ideas and student work in the running of the summit, which we found to be really, really successful last year. Also, our other initiative for the year is becoming more involved in our community through volunteer opportunities and other things like that. So we, I have, I've just been contacted at some different community organizations, and I'm looking into doing some volunteer work for them. We have great attendance at Senate as well, and we are really happy to see many different schools there. Almost all of them are there. So it's really great to see, and we have some really fantastic Senate visits this year. So, yeah.
Thank you. Student, thank you very much. Student Trustee Philip Suzik. Will you be reading the Ontario Student Trustees Report?
It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
At the moment, there are two primary initiatives which are, is being focused on rather, during the Public Court Council of Osteaco. First and foremost, our yearly initiative that we chose to work on was to create a handbook that informs students of their rights as students. During the events that took place last year regarding job action, many students were confused as to what the role students played in speaking up for their rights during a time when many felt that their voices weren't being heard. Thus, we as a public court council felt that it would be appropriate that we as student leaders do what we can to inform other students. Moving forward, another significant thing that is taking place at an Ontario level is the launch of the Ontario Student Parent and Educator Survey. So we encourage students, parents, and educators alike to take the survey in order to have their voice heard as to what they feel supported with regards to Ontario education. Although, rather, the report is brief. That is what is taking place.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for your activities, both locally and revisionally. We come to the Chair's report. My report is to, again, thank the Board of Trustees for the opportunity to be your chair at this moment, and as we move forward through the months, and to thank Trustee Mahalund again for his nomination and for his guidance. He was also with me when we went to visit the co-terminus board, who also had their elections the very next night. So I believe Trustee Mahalund and I are spending a great deal of time together. But this is also the time when most of you will be spending time with your families, your friends, and maybe reflectively or meditatively with yourselves in terms of re-energizing your spirits and energies as we come back in January for yet another exciting period of time as trustees and as superintendents and staff. So whatever is your cultural celebration, or family culture, or religious observance, I do hope you have a wonderful time and get yourself rested and energized again for everything that we will be doing in January. Thank you all very much. And then item 15, to the Director's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few points at the end of this evening that I'd like to bring forward. As many of us know, as we had the opportunity to celebrate, a wonderful, wonderful retirement event and 21st century, our 25th year anniversary celebration took place at Cárman's on November 25th. 113 retirees and 183 members of our staff honored for 25 years. A wonderful event, so well appreciated. The comments I've received from our staff who participated, I'm sure you have as well, offered their thanks. And we are so thankful to them for the great contributions that they have offered to our board, to our students, and to our community. Just a wonderful, wonderful evening. I also wanted to bring to the trustees' attention that two very significant pieces of work that are happening, which are involving quite a large number of our staff, is in the area of mathematics, as we bring together school teams to assist us to understand more deeply how to support our students' learning, how to ensure that we're creating a balanced mathematics program that involves those very significant skills that our students need, and to do so in a collaborative way, so that we are relying on the expertise of our teachers to assist us as we move forward. Those learning sessions, which are very much connected to what's going on in school, have started. We're hearing some great response already to that very systemic approach. Also connected to that work is our commitment to creating the kind of learning conditions that support this learning, such as mathematics. So our positive school climate work, which is bringing together, as you've heard us say, our work in mental health, our work in equity inclusion, our work in safe schools. And our focus is very concrete. We understand we cannot operationalize these significant commitments if we don't have leadership in each and every school. So our work is actually around training and engaging and supporting teams. That work has begun, and again, we're hearing already great feedback from it. My last comment is specific to the very important work of program strategy and transition. I am in the process of visiting all 18 secondary schools. I will be finished with those visits by December 19th. And the purpose of the visits are to listen closely to what our administrators have to say based upon the experiences they have working with their communities. I'm planning to go back to the schools in January, February, and March to connect with staff as appropriate, and also, again, to support this very significant transition work. Executive Superintendent Reinhold, as the board may be aware, is taking the lead on this important work. And we are also looking at other ways that we need to provide appropriate support to ensure that we're successful. We understand this is a time of great change. We're hearing the emotions that that change is causing. We're starting to see glimpses of the opportunity that's emerging in this process, but we understand we have ways to go. And so I will be, through the trustee updating, as well as through opportunities like this, sharing with the trustees and the board on a regular basis what's happening there. Because obviously, if you're aware of exactly what's happening and feeding to us what we need to be thinking about, I believe we can get to a very, very significant place. And I too will close with saying that I hope, on behalf of the exec council, that our board has a wonderful, wonderful season, however you celebrate it, an opportunity to take a break and to have some rest. Hopefully, some laughter and joy in the process as we all gather again in January. But significant amount of work to continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to Trustee Johnstone for the Ontario Public School Boards Association report.
Thank you. Through the chair. I attended an OSTA meeting two weekends ago on the weekend of November 25th. So I have several areas to bring updates on, in regards to labor relations. There's a consultation right now on Regulation 274. Unfortunately, it's unlikely that there will be substantive change in that area, which previously OSTA thought that there would be. OSTA is also continuing to make representations to Bill 122, or 122, for, which is the effective bargaining act. The representations that OSTA is bringing, they're asking for, are balanced in the process related to strike and walkout, and also the need for criteria for placing the bargaining agent under that. In regards to finance, the Finance Director is continuing to do work in collecting data on changes to the sick leave plan. There's also been, in regards to litigation with student transportation FARPs, that's been deferred to the spring, which I commented on previously. That's regarding our school bus consortiums. The ministry is also starting to reform and streamline the EPO process, as boards have indicated that the reporting and accountability associated with the grants is extremely numerous. And also, OSTA has been involved, as you saw in your package tonight, with the ministry in regards to consultations on school board efficiencies and modernizations. In regards to full-day kindergarten, there has been a bill that has come forward. It's Bill 143, which is a childcare modernization act, and that's actually come out since our OSTA meeting in November. And right now, OSTA is looking at, I guess the bill largely looks at private childcare providers. OSTA, however, is providing complementary, especially in the areas of before-and-after-school programming. We're asking for flexibility for local decisions. We're looking at shared space, and we're also looking at affordability. In regards to EQO, the CEO of EQO is launching a strategic planning process that will be consulting with stakeholders. No dates have been set yet. Student Achievement Division is consulting on teaching and learning of mathematics in response to the continuing decline in mathematics scores in EQO. In regards to French as a second language provincial working group, there is a new grade one-to-eight curriculum for ASL, and that's been released online. And the curriculum includes a focus on intercultural perspectives and a broader view, worldview of French. And also, there's, in regards to the upcoming municipal elections, OSTA has online a booklet for new candidates that will be put online in January, and also a booklet for voters to consider, which will be put online in January. Another major development that happened at OSTA two weekends ago was that we passed the Charter of Commitment on First Nations Weeks in Annual Education. And that's a charter that I'm going to bring to this board in the new year to look, to be passed. This is a very important charter, as it puts forward the strengths, a set of values to promote success in First Nations Weeks and Annualits Education in the K-12 sector. And it will be coming to boards as well from OSTA for endorsement. And finally, I do want to remind all trustees that we have our Public Education Symposium, and that will be taking place the weekend of January 30th. I encourage you to go online and check it out. There's some very exciting workshops being offered. And of course, if trustees have any questions, they're welcome to come to me. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We go to item, thank you very much, Trustee Johnstone. We go to item 17. And this is from Uncle Carlton, District School Board. And it, you'll, oh, yes, Trustee Terstra.
So, Madam Chair, I'll be voting on this item because it has to do with education development charges. So I'm preparing a conflict due to an active development company, and also my affiliation with a family business.
Okay, thank you for that. And you can stay in the room because it is public. And you can stay in the room because it is public. Thank you very much. Yes, trustee Bishop.
So, Madam Chair, this seems to be asking... This seems to be looking at development charges as being one solution to capital funding. So I'm wondering if we vote on this, could we ask some questions or stop? What to do about this?
Is this something we would refer to staff?
Well, I'm not sure, you see, because... Maybe we could refer this to staff, because it looks like a very complicated implications of this. And we have Dan Senior Facilities Manager, Dan Delbiacco, is sitting on the provincial committee on capital matters. Maybe this is... Maybe this is a good solution, or maybe it's a partial solution, or maybe there are other things that we should be considering. So I'm not clear at the moment where to go with this, without asking at least some sort of some very general questions of the starters.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Director?
Through you, Madam Chair. I was just conferring with the officer. We can potentially answer general questions, but if there's an interest in more deeper analysis of what's here, we would need to have your direction to look at that. So...
Okay, thank you. Yes, trustee Simmons.
Motion refers to staff.
Okay. Okay, do we have a second here for that? Seconded by trustee Mahalan. I'm sorry, trustee Bishop.
I was getting ready to ask my questions, Madam Chair. No.
I don't like to have a call.
Well, we have a motion. We have a rumor and a second here, so that takes precedent over anything else.
It's the last one.
Yes, trustee Simmons.
Well, is the motion on before you can ask a question?
Yes, absolutely. So, do the trustee Simmons, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, and I think overall, even with the questions that may be asked in general, we do need a deeper analysis of what's... means talked about here, so that's why I made the question.
Thank you very much. Trustee Mahalan, comments?
Well, just we ask some questions at the end, we'll refer, so I just try to get referred instead of wasting a few or 20 minutes asking questions.
Okay.
It should come back.
Okay, thank you. So, I do have a trustee who has some questions she wants to ask. We've now set up the scenario by what she made. Yes, trustee Bishop.
Well, Madam Chairman, scary one to hear, so it's fine. I'll leave my questions.
Trustee Bishop, the motion itself allows you to ask a question.
It's fine, Madam Chairman, I think.
Okay. I saw trustee Orban.
Well, my... Well, I guess staff, as we're getting done, I put my concerns with the new development we're having, and we're going to be building our schools in that area, and we considered more development on how it would be wonderful if we could get the development charges in there to facilitate money that we need in order to build our schools.
Okay, thank you. So, as I'm... Yes, well...
Well, I'm talking about you right now. Things are coming up.
Okay, my understanding that this matter is not about that, but maybe it is. Yes, Officer Delbiacco?
Through you, Madam Chair. Right now, education development charges are used for the acquisition of school sites and the site prep costs to address those school sites, all tied into new growth. What is the movement up for by a number of boards, including Ottawa, to expand what we can spend education development charges on, and that is the capital deployment, which we were never able to in the past. So either investing in a brand-new facility, or in some cases, as outlined in the document, the revitalization of, you know, the downtown core, because they're building, for example, they build a number of towers that generate students, and they'll be going to an existing school to be able to collect those development charges to invest in that existing facility breaking up to speed. This has been going on for a while, and as funds at the provincial level become tighter and tighter, this would provide another avenue to... for funding for school renewal.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? See, trustee White, is that it? I'm not sure whether that...
Through your chair.
Yes, trustee White.
Not to stretch this on any longer, but once we refer this to staff, it's to be brought back to the board or the finance committee, for instance, for discussion.
My understanding of the motion is that it would come back here, but I'll check with the director as to whether he thinks it's going to go.
Through you, Madam Chair. Though it is clear that it would need to come back to the board, I would ask that the board would allow us to at least advise or get insight from finance so that what we bring forward is what the board needs. But yes, we need to come back to the board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor of the motion to refer this item to stop? That is carried unanimously... Trustee Peddle.
Yes.
Thank you. And that is carried unanimously for those who are able to vote. Thank you. Yes, trustee Glazer?
Just before you ask for number 18, because I know that I'm new on the pick committee, but please note that it is Tuesday, December the 10th, not Wednesday, so I don't show up the date later.
Yes, and that is important. And once again, it was a test. And trustee Glazer, if there are extra chocolates, I'll make sure you get some. So it is Tuesday, December the 10th. That wonderfully joint meeting of the Parent Involvement Committee and Special Education Advisory Committee will be occurring at Cathy Weaver School. Also, for your clarification and enjoyment, Student Senate is this Wednesday, I want to be sure, is this Wednesday, December the 11th, at 4:00? And that is in the library, it's Sir Johnny McDonald. And if you're very nice to any of the teachers in the hallway, they'll show you where the elevator is, so you actually don't have to walk up the four floors. Okay. I look forward to a motion...
Finance committee meeting this Wednesday, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
There's a finance committee meeting this Wednesday.
It's a special finance meeting, is it? Thank you very much. It's 1:00, and where is its location?
It's in the standard...
Then it's Life Building.
Is that to offer?
Sorry, I hear that... Okay, thank you. Just to confirm, it is at 1:00 on...
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Again, Wednesday is the 11th. Okay. Any other meetings that have... are occurring, and we just haven't written it down on our sheet of paper? Okay. I look forward, I mean, I would welcome a motion to adjourn. Thank you, trustee Orban, seconded by trustee White. All those in favor? Thank you all very much. Happy holidays.